It is an outlet that you ought to have the possibility to rely on unintended measurement in circumstances where you haven't been able to get that full power conditions that you need for attended measurements, so.
Why couldn't you get some full power measures?
What's really tough to do is it's not just about full power, but it's getting the conditions as well that allow you to collect the sound data, which again requires a wind inversion conditions where you've got high elevation wind speeds, low elevation wind speeds, and a variety of other climatological factors that make it the loudest conditions on the ground where people are gonna hear it. And unless you're just hanging out a wind energy site for four months in a row, 24 hours a day, it's really tough to predict when that's gonna occur, mobilize and get out there and collect that data.
I'm sure the technology today they can monitor that 24 hours a day.
Well, that's what Ron.
That's my point. They're allowing for unintended measurements where you're leaving your equipment out there and then analyze the recording after the fact. So I think that's something that ought to be.
Written into the.
Yeah.
Paul, can we do that?
Ron and I will collaborate on that one.
Okay. Anything else on 24?
Why are we waving? It says may be waived by the planning commission. This requirement may be waived just because they presume that the.
We're deleting that.
You're deleting, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't cross it out.
I presume.
We're, Paul was gonna combine for us three and four.
Okay.
To address both night and daytime at the same time and take off that waving it.
And Ricky wanted to take out general and put precision nothing in the last paragraph, correct?
Yep.
Anything else? All right, let's move on.
Under paragraph seven, one, seven I, it says applicant's measurement, uh, location shall be chosen by the applicant's measurement personnel and by the planning commission. This is a minor thing, but could we say chosen by the applicant's measurement personnel and approved by the planning commission rather than requiring both to make the decision there? I think it just streamlines it a little bit.
I would think we wouldn't want the applicant to.
Make the decision.
Be involved anyway, myself, because I mean, they could be out there and finding out where the lowest sound's gonna be and say, I want it taken here.
Well, that's covered elsewhere in the ordinance, uh, the locations.
But at the same time.
I think a third party should be. I don't know what the spacing would be or how many per section. Some level of proximity lines, I guess, just to take a reading from one.
Here's my question.
If you turn a radio on, it's forty five decibels there, another one there, another one there, another one there. Yeah, individually it'll be, if that's sound level. But when you, what about when you have combined?
That's kind of what I'm, especially a third party should pick the location where the sound should be tested at.
There's a part of, along with that, is that it should be agreed before because isn't this being written as they're going to present a sound study?
Present a study, yeah.
And that means after the fact, we say wrong spot and they've done the study already? I mean.
No, this is, this is referencing the post-construction sound study, but it's saying that the locations where you measure, uh, the sound for that study have to be chosen in advance. And my, my recollection is that where it says applicant's measurement personnel is actually a consultant that is chosen by the township and the applicant. So it is essentially a third party agreed to by both.
It's just the wording is kind of missing to me.
Yeah.
It's not, um, it's not right out of the box saying that the third party is the person that's gonna be in a, especially when it says applicant's measurement personnel, that kind of tells me the, the company is.
We say the selected measurement personnel, because later on in the ordinance, it does define how that.
I just think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit somehow, Paul. I'm not sure you're the one with the wordage, but I think that needs to be cleaned up.
I think, should it say something like the specific measurement locations shall be chosen by the approved specialist or the approved, you know.
True.
Approved by both the applicant and the planning commission.
Yeah. And it suggests to me to even tighten it down, say, then shall be based on modeling another data which predicts the loudest locate, predict, predictor modeling shows the highest sound levels that might occur there. So that there's that criteria to guide it. Necessarily those points have to be what are predicted to be the loudest, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Whatever that.
That wordage that Ron just said.
With the approved third party.
Right.
Yeah. Pretty much, we both agree on who's gonna do it. We want them to pick the loudest possible spot.
Right.
And then measure it.
Right. All right. Everyone good with the rest of that? Okay, let's move on.
Again, on paragraph seven, the last part of that paragraph says a minimum of eight measurement locations. But when I look at sub-paragraphs one and two, that adds up to six, so.
What Roman numeral is the?
Roman numeral one, two. Minimum of four and a minimum of two measurements.
Six.
That's just, it's more of a discretion. See, they just have an eight.
And then here it says.
Oh, okay.
Change it up.
Right there.
Is that a typo or?
Well, no, I don't think so, because it says the measurement locations shall include but are not limited to. So shall include is the six, but not limited to, so you should have, you could have two more. You have to have two more.
Well, there's a minimum of eight. Yeah, it says a minimum of eight, that's why I was questioning. But Ron just suggested maybe under Roman numeral three where it says any measurement location determined necessary, uh, by the applicant's measurement personnel and planning commission, maybe we say up to two additional, or at least two additional measurement locations determined necessary, so that gives more flexibility to where those others might be.
Good. Everyone understand that?
To make it at least two, so then we equal our eight.
Right, yeah.
Number eight, the data should be reported to the planning commission within forty-five days of completion. I guess, my feeling is this planning commission isn't an expert or we don't, I mean, we can make sure the data is under the, um, guidelines, but, um, I think maybe that should be a little bit tougher there.
Yeah.
Aren't we gonna hire somebody for sound? I think we, they should have something in there about some sound engineer, something that they need to report back to. That's my feeling, anyway. Anyone else?
I think they need a third party.
There's a third, there needs to be a third party involved.
Yeah.
But it should not be the same party that's doing the measurement. Does that make sense? If we're gonna get a report in.
Well, the, the people doing the measuring should report to us plus a third party expert.
Yes, yes. It's like a different company.
Right. Do you understand that, Paul?
I do, I'm looking for.
We can find somebody, okay.
Something that I came across that I think requires.
Right, final visitor, Paul.
A different party.
Very good.
So under eight, we want to add, um, township may retain third party expert.
Someone, yeah, someone different that's doing the measuring, a third party engineering company or something to evaluate the results of the test.
That'd be good.
And it's the choice of the planning commission only. That's not a negotiating one. Because they're gonna need to report to us.
Yeah.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Done with twenty-six, though?
Yep.
It's only says.
Letter, um, I don't know if I'll call it letter, or number six, VI, energy output for each measurement. There will, um, what, what do we care what the energy output is of it?
As long as it's meeting all the other.
As long as it's meeting all the other guidelines, but why do we need to know how much energy it's actually putting out? I think that should be stricken out of there. Anyone else?
Would there be a reason that needed to be?
Where, where did I put it? Page.
Where are you all including for each?
Page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
No, that's definitely something you want. That's typically reflected as a percentage. You wanna know that the turbine's operating at at least ninety percent power, so, and their ride producing its maximum sound levels. So you definitely want to know what the output is. That's not typically expressed in wattage, it's nine, like ninety percent of full power is typically what you're targeting for your loudest conditions. So you wanna know that when the measurement is taken.
I didn't get that on the pass.
Yeah.
I think it's described. It has to be.
All the way around. So sort of say, energy output should be ninety percent, or should you put some type of percentage in there for output?
Ron, is that something we should put in there? How much output's coming out of that in there?
Sometimes it's probably hard to get about ninety percent.
What I'm trying to recall is that's already a component of the ANSI method that they're required to use anyways. I have Paul put a note on that and something we can evaluate, but I, I think that might be part of the ANSI section eighteen so-and-so standard already, so you don't have to restate it again, but we can double check on that.
But you said the information we would receive would be given as a percentage of full output is how that's usually stated.
That's the way it would typically be, there's probably a raw value as well on kilowatts that they report, but it's, it's a percentage of full power that's really gonna tell you if you're at the loudest conditions.
Anybody got anything else to question?
Are we on page twenty-eight?
Yeah.
There's a similar sentence to obtain compliance or mitigation or other measures that I think should also be changed, that the tower is shut off and thirty days to comply.
What do you reckon, S M D?
Number nine, like the last four lines of number nine, it's almost the same as the one.
Yeah, shall be required to obtain compliance.
Yeah, that it should be.
Thirty days.
Shall obtain compliance within thirty days and the tower would be shut off during that time, the same wording that Paul suggested before.
I don't have a problem with adding thirty days to it under compliance.
They won't know if they're in compliance or not.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, they probably have to test at some point. But as far as just letting it run.
No, correct.
Good on twenty-eight.
Measurement locations, I, I, it says measurement location shall be determined by the zoning enforcement officer or supervisor beforehand, but then under, I guess it's Roman numeral three, it says any measurement location determined necessary by the planning commission. Trying to figure out what my comment was. I guess it's, I guess I misread it when I made my comment. So what this seems to be saying is zoning enforcement officer or supervisor, you may, may wanna say and supervisor, um, plus any location the planning commission recommends.
In addition to.
In addition to, yes.
Is that, is that what that says? But are not limited to? Shall include but are not limited to?
Right.
And then do we, uh, then we need one.
Roman fifth, typo, Roman numeral two, fourth line at the end, here is the closest.
Closest.
So what about, um, is the zoning enforcement officer or supervisor, is that because sometimes you call them both, or in our situation is that saying Dave or Terry?
I read it as.
But then you wanted to put in planning commission either also, right?
Well, planning commission is Roman numeral three.
But if you would add planning commission after supervisor, then you could do a little Roman numeral.
Well, I, I think the intent is that those two select the locations based on the criteria that are listed here, but the planning commission has the opportunity to suggest other locations.
All right.
So we're just gonna leave it?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight's done, then correct around twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Under, under B, C, D, E, F, um, those criteria again are the same as seven, three through seven, so I would, um, simply reference the prior section rather than repeating all of those again.
So basically, let's clean that up.
Yeah.
Some might wanna wait till the very end, 'cause I tell you, that was a drafting decision I made, because there's so much editing going on, and I was afraid if I cross-referenced to another section, you would get lost in the editing process. So, well, that's a good idea, that something you might wanna wait till the very end, because whatever section you're referencing might change its number over there.
So it would just be cross-referencing to save it?
So twenty-eight, we're on thirty, correct?
Just to be sure, what's in green is what is corrected to reference the rights. We don't have to make a decision about that.
Yeah, those are correct currently. I had highlighted them to point out these are provisions that we need to correct it to number eight on the ordinance change.
Was that the same as before? Does that mean? Does that, on ten? On ten, I, does that, says completed by an independent third party that is hired by the township?
Yeah, you read my mind. I was just gonna point out to you earlier when we were having the concern about who's gonna be doing this testing, that's a provision that makes clear that it's an independent third party, but it's a really just one draft improvement that could be made. When this is referenced in several pages earlier, it uses a capitalized term, measurement personnel, as though that's defined somewhere. Paul, something you might wanna look at here is in this paragraph, let's call that something, whether it's the measurement personnel or the designated personnel, and then use that term again in all places where it appears in the ordinance, so it's clear that that's the neutral third party hired by the township that's doing it.
And then would that be added to the definitions, or is it there?
It could be done in the definitions, or we could do it within that subsection ten's little I, indicate that that's the, you know, I don't know what term you wanna use, designated sound expert or whatever you wanna call it, just so it's consistent throughout the ordinance, so whenever that shows up, we know that's the neutral third party hired by the township.
Is that the same personnel that are in the second one here? Where it says measurement personnel?
Yeah. Yeah.
So it'd be the same, so there it is listed as measurement personnel.
Right. It's just, it's not quite so precise, as I'd like to be right now about defining exactly who that is, and that's a drafting thing for looking at.
So we, right now, we use, we have two different entities. One is those that are recording the sound and have been approved by both the applicant and the township. And then we're talking about the sound expert who's going to do the evaluating of things as well as what we just, the point we're at now.
Well, that's a, a good question, and something you should talk about is, I mean, the short answer is no, I don't think that's how you ought to set it up. The township hired sound personnel, neutral third party that the township hires to do this, would be the same party that's evaluating and presenting its data to the township. What the applicant is going to do is hire their own company to perform a parallel study while this is going on, because they're gonna want to collect the same data and be in a position to say, we agree or disagree with your expert about it. Now, you don't have to address that in the ordinance, because it's in the applicant's, or in this case, if it's post-construction, the permit is option to do that parallel study with their own expert. But there's no real reason to have your own hired neutral expert do the sound testing and then have somebody else looking at their data, because they're supposed to be neutral and working for the, you know, for compliance for the ordinance in the first place.
So in that spot where we said it would be a decision by the applicant and the planning commission, we should just remove approved, you know, a person or?
Well, ultimately, the planning commission is the body with zoning authority, and the township has to make these decisions, but you're necessarily gonna be doing it in compliance. But you're necessarily gonna be doing it in consultation with your neutral expert you've hired, because it's a very complex matter, that you're gonna rely on them and probably do what they recommend anyways. So what it should be saying is that, you know, they'll be proposed, the spots will be proposed by the applicant and approved by the planning commission in consultation with their sound measurement personnel. And I think then we went on to say, based on criteria used to predictively model the, the loudest locate, the location where sound is predicted to be the loudest.
So that, for us, would have been, page twenty-five.
Yeah, that's seven, little I.
Seven, I. It's not the applicant's measurement personnel. It's the measurement person hired by the township.
Right.
And the applicant can agree or disagree, or run their own study. So with the word "applicants..."
Yeah, what I would suggest is, it says, "Specific locations shall be proposed by the applicant and approved by the planning commission in consultation with its measurement personnel, using criteria designed to target the locations of highest predictive noise based on the pre-construction sound study and other relevant factors."
You get that all, now, Paul?
Ron and I are talking.
Yeah, these are all good questions. These are some of the fine detail that's coming from Spicer Group that weren't quite, you know, sanded on the edges, yes, it needs some work.
Because that means that if we define that term of the sound specialist, then it would always be referring to the one the planning commission chose.
Right.
Which then, I think it should be a definition. Because we have definitions about sound, so sound specialist would fit right in there. We have sound power, sound power level, sound pressure.
It's a good idea.
Sound specialist.
Anything else? Good on thirty? Thirty-one.